For the record, it's 5:15 PM on June 14th, 2018. The Wenatchee City Council is out of executive session. They'll call the meeting to order. First item is going to be the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Poyer, would you do this?
Yes, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Poyer. And for the record, we have six council members present, and Linda Harold is on the phone. Councilmember Harold, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent. First item on today's agenda is our consent items, which includes agenda vouchers, minutes from their previous meetings, a resolution 2823, a resolution 2825, and authorizing the mayor's signature on a retirement agreement.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and also to adopt resolution number 2018-23, designating the mayor as a voting representative on behalf of the governing board of the Greater Wenatchee Regional Events Center Public Facilities District, and also to adopt resolution number 2018-25, declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee and authorizing the police department to dispose of the personal property identified herein, and also to adopt the motion to authorize the mayor's signature on a retirement and release agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Kulas, to adopt this evening's consent agenda as presented in your packet this evening, including vouchers and minutes from their previous meetings, the agenda, resolution 2823, resolution 2825, and the mayor's signature on a retirement and release agreement. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen comment. This will be a time when any member of the audience could address the council on any item. We ask that you give us your name and address for the record. We'll give you about three minutes. Yes, sir, come on up.
Wherever you stand.
Sit down.
Sit.
Yep, sit down. Name and address for the record.
My name is John McCabe. I live at 412 Lombard Lane in Wenatchee. I'm here to share a concern I have with signage in the Wenatchee Business District. You know, I feel it's out of control. I'm a new homeowner, been here about 16 months. I enjoy the people of this town immensely, and the business people are really quite wonderful. I've driven through the Business District numerous times, Wenatchee Avenue, Chelan Avenue, and for me, it's an extremely unpleasant experience, the shopping environment. And I think the signage contributes to the problem. Cluttered, unsightly, distracting is how I feel. Many business signs are too large, too high. They can involve piggybacking, flashing lights. There's numerous large billboards sprinkled among the business signs, and that adds sense to the disorder and the distraction. And now, video signage is appearing, and it creates, in my view, even more distraction. Many are too large and too bright, and in some cases, can be dangerously distracting. There's a higher potential for personal injury downtown with all the traffic and property damage. For me, it feels like a ferocious shouting match. I checked the city regulations related to signage, and the first page of the regulations outlines the purpose of the regulations. I highlighted statements 2, 3, and 7 for you. Statements 2, 3, and 7 refer to reducing visual clutter in the business area with the signage, reducing distractions, promoting safe driving, and creating a satisfactory community appearance. I feel what's happening downtown does not match up with the goals the city has established for its signage. If the clutter is reduced over time, I think it's just a much better overall experience for everybody. Customers will enjoy their experience in Wenatchee better, stay longer, buy more. Visitors, when they come to Wenatchee, will enjoy their shopping experience better in Wenatchee, they'll stay longer and purchase more, and then businesses, I anticipate, would probably do better. So, I hope the council agrees with my comments, and I hope that you can make it a priority to start making improvements if you agree with me. And I really thank you for your time. Thank you.
So, John, today's your lucky day. So, we are just starting the process of updating our sign code. So you want to go say hi to Glenn DeVries. Glenn, raise your hand. Glenn's our planning director, and we're starting about what'll be a six-to-eight-month process to relook at our sign code. So we want to have your participation in that. And I said, the second thing I would say is some of these signs are grandfathered in because they were built in the -- and we're working hard to get those sorts of change, especially the billboard issue is one that I think the council and myself agree with you on. But we are starting the heavy lifting on the sign code literally as we speak, and we need public comment, and we need public comment like that for us to get where we need to go.
Well, appreciate that, and I'm very happy to hear that.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, John. Go find Glenn, because we're going to change phone numbers, because you're not going to come in here and talk without getting on a committee to help.
I learn that all the time.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Anybody else wish to address the council on any sort of items? If not, we have two presentations tonight. The first is regarding General Aviation Appreciation Month. Who's got that proclamation?
I believe I have it.
Councilmember Huffaker.
Proclamation, whereas the city of Wenatchee and the state of Washington has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation education institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports, and whereas general aviation and the Pangborn Memorial Airport have an immense economic impact on Wenatchee, and whereas general aviation not only supports Washington's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas, the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the city of Wenatchee and declare June as General Aviation Appreciation Month in the city of Wenatchee. In witness whereof, I set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 14th day of June 2018. Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Huffaker. Somebody here from the airport?
No.
From the port? Anybody here to accept the aviation? There's no one?
I'm going to scan it and email it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And I don't believe we have any other presentations, although we do have Washdot. Dave Kinniger? Dave, come on up. Give us an update on our paving project through downtown Wenatchee. How are you today?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
So, I'll try and be brief. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on this paving project we have coming through town. The city is a partner with us on this paving project. My name is David Kinniger. I'm a project engineer for Washington State DOT, and so I'll be administering the contract we have with Central Washington Asphalt is the prime contractor who's going to be paving SR 285 through town. So, the city streets we're working with, basically, we start down at Bridge Street near Ferry Street. We come all the way up Mission Street on the one-way until we get to Miller Street. We have a short section, we skip there, and then we'll go out on North Wenatchee Avenue all the way out to the Easy Street interchange out there. So it's about four and a half miles of paving. We are also doing about 20 of the adjacent city side streets, so we'll be planing those out with a grinder and then paving back. In addition to that, we have about 66 ADA ramps will be updating throughout the city limits. There's 10 signal systems that will be affected, either completely rewired or portions of them will be rewired, and a lot of that is necessitated because of doing the ADA ramp work. There's a little bit of storm sewer modifications we'll be needing to do with those curb cutouts. And then, we're also installing two miles of future ITS fiber on the north end of the project that will connect into the -- we're actually not installing the fiber now, we're installing the conduits. And then, so one of those is for the city of Wenatchee to use, and one is for the state DOT to use. And then we have some bridge joint and bridge deck work to do on the bridges over the Wenatchee River on the north end of the project, and I anticipate those are going to be probably the biggest impact to traffic. We have to actually shift all the traffic onto one of the bridges and close one of them down over a weekend. Currently, that's scheduled for the weekend.
Weekend day or weekend night?
All day, day and night.
Okay.
From basically Friday night till Monday morning to completely repave that bridge and put a new waterproof membrane on it and do some bridge deck repairs. So.
Will you be doing some PSAs prior to that?
Yes.
Just to kind of help everybody understand they need to take a different route?
Yep, we will. And it's going to be, we're going to make sure it happens on a different weekend than -- we also have bridge cleaning that we have to do this summer on the Senator George Seller Bridge, which will impact traffic over the weekend on that. So there'll be two separate weekends, but those will be big impacts to traffic. The rest of the project is all scheduled to be night work, so there'll be minimal impacts to traffic. There are some weekend closures of some of those signals because they'll be rewiring them, and so they'll have to shut them off, and so they'll get everything done over the weekend and then turn them back on. So what we're planning for those signal closures is that the main street, Mission Street, will still be flowing, all the lanes will be flowing during the day, and you can exit at those intersections. We'll just have to close the city streets down so they can't enter there because the lights won't be working. So that's our plan.
Do we know when we're starting?
We are starting the 24th, so in about a week and a half, Sunday night.
So we'll start seeing nights and grinds, grinding on the streets and?
You won't see too much of that right away. We've got to get all that, the ramp work, the ADA ramps done early on in the project so that we can pave up to them when they're done, so it'll be a nice finished product. We have 80 working days in the contract, so, and it's a tight schedule, but they'll be working basically the rest of the summer, and they'll be finishing up paving toward the end of September. I don't expect the grinding to start really getting going until mid-August. So there's quite a bit of pre-work to do on all the ADA ramps before we get to that point. But I just wanted to let you know we had kind of the scope of the project, and I know you guys have a lot of dollars involved in this project as well. I wanted to see if you had any questions for me, or if that was it.
No, I think we're excited for the project. I know we've got some of our TBD dollars and other money sort of going into -- it seemed to make the most sense while they were paving to get some of those side streets done, so
Yep.
I think we're anxious to get it started and get it finished.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe on the finish.
Maybe on the finish, yeah.
David reached out early on to make sure we can coordinate with public information. So Ana has been working with their PIO, and then Ana's out in training this week, so Tammy attended their meeting this morning to get the timing down and all of that. So, good coordination on both parts.
Okay.
Any questions for David? All right, go ahead.
I was just thinking something from the downtown association meeting yesterday that there's going to be a Wenatchee Avenue closure for the three-on-three basketball tournament in July.
Yeah, that's in July.
I don't know if that's?
Is that on a weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We were going to work.
I just mentioned that because of another block in the north-south corridor.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep.
It's life.
Yep. We'll try to coordinate on those as much as we can, and our contractors understands that there's some events like that in the city, so they're going to be trying to work around that as well. So, okay.
All right. Thanks, David. Appreciate you being here. All right, action items this evening. We have a number of action items and some public hearing items. First action item is regarding an agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Chelan County for some storm drain on Indy Lane. Jeremy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here to talk about the interlocal agreement with Chelan County for the construction of some storm drain that they had programmed in Chatham Hills, and they would like us to include that, and we have included that, as part of the Sunny Slope Sewer Extension Project. It's just a couple of hundred feet of sewer and some catch basins associated with that. The county has, we have separately, we have separate bid items for the storm drain work so that we can itemize everything between what we are paying and what the county will be reimbursing us for, and this interlocal agreement is just basically an agreement to do the work and have the county reimburse us for it. So I'm here to recommend that the city council, oh, sorry, wrong one. I'm here to recommend the city council approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Chelan County for the storm drain construction work in Indy Lane and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
So it's 100% reimbursable?
Yes, and we're also going to get some of the design fees back as well.
So this was already in our contract with our, in our bid specs?
Yes.
Okay. And we didn't know that, and then, yeah. Okay. I thought it was an add-on, but if it was already in the bid specs, then?
Nope, it's money back.
Very good. Any questions for Jeremy? If not, an entertaining motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Chelan County for the storm drain construction work in Indy Lane and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Spars, and second by Councilmember Markhart to authorize the mayor's signature on the interlocal agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Chelan County for storm drain construction in Indy Lane. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Jeremy, next item, storm drain, project 1803 on Miller Street.
So, this project is being done in advance of the DOT paver project. We are anticipating to be out of that corridor in advance of them being in the area. So this is a project to replace about 550 feet of 42-inch and 48-inch storm drain with a new 48-inch pipe, basically in front of Taco Bell in Miller, north of Mission, and south of the avenue. The existing pipe is in pretty bad condition in that area. We thought we were going to be looking at a longer section of pipe at first, but after some reconnaissance, we were able to pare that down to about 550 feet. We issued the, we advertised on May 22nd. We opened bids on June 7th. The low bidder was Hurst Construction at $359,565. High bid was at $472,813.80. The engineers' estimate for construction was $322,201. So I'm here to request that the city council award the contract for the construction of the North Miller Street Storm Drain Replacement Project, number 1803, to Hurst Construction, Inc., in the amount of $359,565, and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract.
And I think I would add, we are slightly over budget on this, so I think there's a little language that maybe Mr. Bailey might know about in terms of authorizing budget authority. Is this the one that needs the budget authority?
Yeah, yeah. I have some additional language to add to that.
Okay.
Motion.
So any questions about the project? I know this has been on fast pace, trying to get this in ahead of the Washdot paving project, and so I know the bidding climate's been a little tough. You'll see that here in a minute. So we talked about it today at finance at some length, so.
Was the original estimate based on the full length of the pipe or the reduced length of the?
The reduced length.
Okay, thanks.
Jeremy, I was just curious, on the SEJ, their estimate was $322,201, and then the engineers' estimate was $331,685. Did you guys do a separate estimate?
Where are you getting the $331,000? I'm sorry, I've got $322 for the, for SEJ's.
Our spreadsheet says $331, but?
Yeah, so then ours, there's another one there, so I wonder why there's two separate engineering bids.
Since it includes sales tax, although that wouldn't be enough for sales tax.
No, there shouldn't be sales tax on a storm drain. That's one of the items that is exempt by the Washdot, or the?
Pay code.
The code, thank you. I can't answer that off the top of my head. I would have to look at the spreadsheet that we have. I do not have a copy of that in front of me. But I know that was, there was a significant difference between the bid items that we got and the original estimate.
Yeah, well, I know that.
I apologize, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
It's gone up, and that's fine. I just wonder, I just guess, I was just wondering why there were two separate engineering bids.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that. I can probably answer that when I look into my notes.
Okay.
You just shoot me an email. Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Jeremy? If not, Councilmember Bailey?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the city council to award the contract for construction of the North Miller Streets Storm Drain Replacement Project, number 1803, to Hurst Construction, Inc., in the amount of $359,565, and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract and approve the budget amendment for this project.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize awarding of the contract 1803 to Hurst Construction in the amount of $359,565, authorizing the mayor's signature, and approving the budget amendment for that project. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Waiting for Linda. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm guessing that was seven in favor. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Next up is regarding a contract amendment with Waste Management. Aaron Kelly, how are you today? Good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Aaron Kelly, Public Works Operations Manager, here to discuss the proposed Waste Management Contract Amendment. The city currently contracts collection of garbage and recycling materials with Waste Management through a contract that was approved back in 1996. The original contract allows for amendments when they are mutually agreeable with both parties. The original contract was amended, was extended and amended in 2002, and then this third proposed amendment addresses four different items. Some city services, sorry, services to city-owned facilities, and really, this is just getting what we currently have been getting serviced on, in the contract, so it's documented. Second, changes to the service levels at the regional decant facility. These changes really reflect the shared use of the facility with Chelan County. Waste Management has agreed to annually haul up to 130 loads and dispose of 1,000 tons of decant waste for the city at no charge. Hauls above and beyond that are going to be, end up charged by the haul fee and disposal rates for that, but as it's a shared facility, this is going to even out what the actual true costs are. Third, the amendment identifies the list of acceptable items at the transfer station for residents for no-charge dumps, and this just clarifies the same process that we've been working through, really no changes. Finally, it also adds the Code Enforcement Assistant Pilot Program. This is a code enforcement's coupon program for residents that identify to clean up properties that in need of assistance to do so. The program allows for code enforcement to hand out 50 coupons a year, and this is just getting this into the, into the contract as well. So I'm here to recommend that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the third amendment to the contract with Waste Management.
Aaron?
Oh, sorry. Aaron, on the code enforcement coupons, which I think is a great idea, so we don't have stuff sitting on the streets, but is it limited to what they, if I get one, what I can dump? Or is it only furniture and trees and things like that?
There is a list of what the acceptable items are there to be able to get cleaned up, because there's no, still no hazardous waste, there's no?
How about lumber and things like that?
Appliances and such.
Appliances, okay.
Correct.
Do we have, well, we have our annual appliances that we can get rid of?
Correct, and code enforcement works also with the recycling, I believe it's a recycling facility just down, down the street from Waste Management as well, to be able to actually also to have folks get, dispose of those appliances there.
Okay, thank you. I know in the past.
And this is Councilmember Harold. Is it still single-stream? In the, there's special arrangements, it talks about collection of garbage and recyclables. Are they sorting those out, or is it something where they just pick it up and put it all together again?
So it's still single-stream recycling is still currently what, what waste picks up. It still does get sorted over at the Smart Center in Spokane. Am I answering your question correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you.
I know in the past, they've talked about coming up with multiple-sized cans for residential. Are we any closer to exploring that with Waste Management?
That is something during, when we actually discuss our new contract of what we, what we're going to want to end up discussing, if that's what the road we're going to go down. This contract goes through 2020. We can actually start discussing at the end of this year about what we want to see in that next contract.
Perfect. Thank you. So every time we hire a new department head, we tell them they're in charge of negotiating the new contract with Waste Management. Luckily, we hired Aaron, who used to work at Waste Management, so now he's in charge of working on the contract for Waste Management, so.
Lucky you.
Yeah, so he'll be working on that over the next, next couple of years. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, Jim, a couple of things. On the recycling thing, is it, at least what, things that, several things that I've read is that basically recycling situation is basically, the things basically tanked, they're not, they're basically, so are we basically taking our, we're collecting all the recyclables, hauling them to Spokane and taking them out to the dump there, or are they just, are we start cutting that and not having to spend the money to haul it to Spokane, we just take it to our dump?
They do actually still have the Smart Facility that actually is processing, trying to find our kits to be able to dispose recyclables to. It is a challenge, but nothing at this point is getting necessarily going back into the landfills.
Okay, so you're, so you're still doing, you're still processing?
Yes, and actually, I mean, for further, we've got Tammy with, with waste here if she wants to answer any of these questions a little bit more. Sorry to put you on the spot, Tammy, but we're doing okay.
Okay.
And just the free dump guidelines, do we communicate that in the mail to our, our citizens about the guidelines for the free dump?
So.
I guarantee you, I violate that when I go. I'm just trying, how do we communicate what's allowed in the free dump?
So I know that at City Hall here, we actually hand them out with utility bills, or when people sign up for service, we hand them out.
Yep.
Okay, I was just unaware what we were doing. Perfect. All right, any other questions for Aaron?
Nope.
If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the third amendment to the contract with Waste Management.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor's signature on the third amendment to the contract with Waste Management. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Aaron. Thanks for whatever you did last Friday, or Thursday, whatever day that was, Friday. Private use of public spaces, Steve King.
Evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to ask for a passage of this resolution that will extend the demonstration project for private use of public spaces, which is essentially sidewalk seating, like out next to Cafe Maila and various places in town. And this has been going on for quite some time. I think our first one was in 2013. We extended it then, and then in 2016, we added the parklets to the, to the discussion. And honestly, it's just been a staff load that we have not been able to get the code, final code developed. It's probably okay because we've learned a few things with the parklets, and so staff is working on this year, development of the final code. Our Public Works Director brought, brought some experience and some ideas from Kirkland, so I don't think we'll have to do an extension again, but there are people that want to add outdoor seating, and they're not able to because it technically expired at the end of the year, so we want to go ahead and accommodate those folks that want to have outdoor seating, and so we're just extending this demonstration project.
So last time we discussed this, we hadn't had anybody else apply. Now we've had a few other people who are interested?
I think we've had people apply for sidewalk seating, but not parklet. So there's two different, two different things happening here.
Those are just sidewalk seating that they're interested in?
Yeah.
What's the code for the distance to be able to walk on a sidewalk?
Five feet.
Five feet?
Yeah.
Is that getting forced at all, or do you know, or?
If there's a complaint, I know the guys go down and take a look at it. Yeah, yep.
It does when I walk the street.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking of something particular. All right, any questions for Steve? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Yeah, Steve, I'll just get this in real quick. I mean, we've been doing, we've had this basically in six years at this point. I, I guess it seems to me it's time to, you know, either, either do it or don't do it, kind of thing. At this point, I guess, is it, is, in your opinion, has it been successful?
I think so. I think there's a few things we've learned. Some of it, I think, is we've had a few comments about the width, people encroaching in on the width, but generally, it's been successful, and, and I think we're ready to get it into code form. Actually, we started working on it. It's just, it's hard to say, you can't have, when somebody wants to apply for space, and it's hard to say you can't have them, because we don't have our code in place right now when somebody down the street has a, has an installation. So this is, this is just to get us to the, get us through this year, basically.
And we should mention that Steve's here on behalf of Rob, myself, Glenn DeVries. We met, and Rob, coming from Kirkland, actually wrote their sidewalk cafe code, and so we thought it gave us a great opportunity. When we took our tour, we actually went to one of the streets, and he showed us the kind of uses that it's enabling, and how they're labeling for alcohol use on the sidewalk without the need for barricades, and so we thought it gave us a great opportunity to reevaluate and look at that use, which is working really effectively for Kirkland.
Just the last thing, I guess, just a question. There's no fee, notice there's no application fee, but we don't charge for this. It's basically just by application, you, you get to do that. Does that put us at, I guess, at risk or anything for, what's the term, givings? We're, we're providing using public, public facilities with, you know, for somebody else to make money with?
I don't, no, I don't think so. To answer your question directly, it doesn't put us at risk for that. We do think that, you know, when we implement the final code, that there probably would be some fee system. So we're talking about incorporating it with our business licenses, so there's an annual check-in, because they need to provide proof of insurance, and there might be an annual fee. For example, Kirkland charged so much per square foot, but it's pretty common. Cities do this pretty commonly, and so, especially in the case of a demonstration, I don't think there's any risk about gift, we're not gifting anything.
Yeah, gifting, that was a term, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Steve? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-24, extending a demonstration project for the private use of public space for the purposes of outdoor seating.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Markhart, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt Resolution 2018-24, extending the demonstration project for the private use of public spaces for the purposes of outdoor seating. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Jacob. Western and Springwater. Hurst Construction again?
Hurst Construction again. So I'm here to talk to you about the Western and Springwater, or Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager, here to talk about the Western and Springwater Mini Roundabout Project, Project 16, excuse me, 1616. So the plan, as you can see on the exhibit here, is to install a mini roundabout relatively similar to the one that we have at Cherry that was put in last year. The city was awarded a Surface Transportation Block Grant back in 2016 for $230,000 to facilitate this project, or help facilitate this project. It was designed over the past year, and we held a public open house last December. We advertised for construction on the 22nd. Bids were opened on this last Tuesday, June 12th. We had two bidders. Hurst Construction was the low bidder at $413,457.33. Unfortunately, that was 23% over our engineer's estimate of 330, around $336,000. We talked at length today at Finance Committee about kind of the bidding climate as it is now, and, and the position that we're in with some of our public works projects. And at this point, in talking to, like I said, both Finance Committee and Washout Local Programs, who's administering the federal grant that we have, we recommend that we move forward with this project and award to Hurst. If awarded, the contract specifies that the project would start on July 9th. It's a 30-day contract, so that gets it wrapped up prior to school starting in the fall. If you have any questions, I am happy to take those.
Yeah, so Finance Committee talked long and hard about this, and don't really feel like there's too many other choices other than to move forward. There is a small part, a pot of federal money that the Transportation Council talked about today that we're getting allocated to, that we talked about specifically going to projects who are seeing cost overruns. So there may be a chance that the next transportation meeting for me to find a few extra dollars to help with this, but not enough to cover all of the overruns. I think maybe 35th Street in Douglas County might get a piece of it, and maybe the Shalane Bridge, but it, cost of concrete and other stuff, but this is the right time to get it done, right in the right window when school's out, and so I, as far as I'm concerned, I think we're about ready to go.
I have a question about a specific component of the project. My observation of, of pedestrian crossings associated with roundabouts is, it can be rather interesting for pedestrians. Is this going to, are we using any of the fast-flash beacons for walking here, so it's, it's just, you're on your own?
We're not, yeah, we're not at this point. Though typically, you'll see a rapid flash beacon, a pedestrian-exuded beacon at roundabouts that are multi-lane. So if folks are crossing multiple lanes to get from, say, an ADA ramp into a refuge island, that's a very typical application for it. Roundabouts inherently are a little bit different in terms of how they deal with PEDs than a typical intersection. You know, with a signalized intersection, the PEDs are, are as close to the intersection itself as, as you can be. Roundabouts typically, as you see in this drawing, the crosswalks are set about 20 feet back from the edge of the intersection, and the reason for that is if a car is waiting or yielding, so waiting to get into the roundabout, you don't want to block the, the pedestrian's ability to cross.
Yeah, my, my observation is the peril that pedestrians have for, from the right-hand turns, because the crosswalk is set back, and the drivers are looking this way, and they're not looking that way. And that's, and I've sat enough at the, one of, one of them in East Wenatchee to see that it's, it's dangerous.
Yeah, this, what I can say is, I think it's, there's a couple of things that play into this. One, it's, it's driver education, that there are going to be PEDs that are, you know, 20 feet back from where you would typically expect them at in a roundabout. And the, the more that we have, you know, throughout the city of Wenatchee and the region as a whole, I think that you'll see that improve.
Are the middle sections designed to be pedestrian safe zones halfway through the intersection? Are those designed to be places to hang out for a little while, or?
You know, limited time, yeah. Those are, those are designed to be a minimum of six feet wide at the, at the skinniest point, and that, that follows, you know, federal highways guidelines.
In theory, you could go through one lane, stop, hang out for a minute, and do the rest of it.
Yeah.
In theory, you don't have to wait, because you have the right-of-way.
Just like Councilmember Kulaus just pointed out, the problem is, is that when, in this case, if you're crossing Springwater heading north, the driver turning right there is busy looking left at all the, I've seen it happen several times on Cherry Street. It's just a miracle we haven't run anybody over yet. Those either need to go down further, or...
We have to go down further.
Put a traffic light in there instead of a roundabout and make it all functional.
So the one issue with, with pushing them further is, one, on approach speeds, you have people going faster, so they haven't slowed down yet going into the roundabout. Additionally, as you exit the roundabout, speeds typically pick up, so you know, if you put it double the distance, that's double the, the room for people to be able to speed up through that zone, so it's, it's definitely a happy meeting.
And I'm, I'm thinking of this one, because we're going to get a fair amount of development going on there. Wenatchee School District still owns property that we don't know what they're going to use for, so we're talking a school route here at some point. And I'm really applying this to the one at South Miller in Red Apple, which has, it is next to the high school, and it is next to the campus of Confluence Health. There is a lot of people trying to cross the streets there, and, and so I don't know if there's safe routes to schools, money that can be thrown in for the rapid flat. Not that the rapid flash always works. I saw people driving through the one at Metow and Ferry today. That was rather interesting. So it, it's, I'm not opposed to roundabout. I'm for the project. I'm just, just kind of wondering how the pedestrian safety component fits in, into these things that we're doing.
I pulled my chair up, sorry. Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director. What I was going to suggest is we would get the, get the roundabout constructed. Let us do an analysis on the pedestrians there. In my former life, we had really good success with the pedestrian flags. I know we haven't, we've used them a little bit here in Wenatchee, but this could be an opportunity to try it. We have the flags that allow pedestrians to use, to alert drivers, and then, so I was wondering if that might appease the council to come, we'll get it built, study it, maybe come back with some alternatives.
Yeah, we can watch it, and Chief Crowns Group can do some maybe behavioral modification associated with it as well.
We also saw a number of staff participated in a webinar this last week that looked at kind of temporary pop-up Public Works projects, and they had some innovative signage that they used, really kind of bold signage that said, "This is a roundabout," and that, so it's right there in front of you, kind of as a, it was, it was a neat feature, and everybody commented on the signage. It's kind of a sandwich board there in the middle of things, so...
It is designed to slow you down. It's obvious, like people are, oh, you can't drive into it without knowing that I'm...
Another comment I'd make about the, and I agree with you, Mark, these, these things are, they have a lot of advantages for, for cars, but, you know, pedestrians are, you know, it's, it's iffy at times. And the only comment I guess I would make about the flag thing, we use them down there, particularly the one at Laughlin's. I sit there and, you know, you watch people grab a flag and then run for their lives, you know, kind of thing. Target. And we, when we did have, fortunately, not a fatality, but, you know, somebody got, finally did get picked off down there. But, but flags are, you know, at least, it's, it's pretty visible in the daytime, but when it gets dark, that, that's useless, you know. So, you know, and...
I've seen flags with those little reflectors on them, too.
Yeah, the flags that we, the flag we use are reflector. In our experience, it is a process to educate the drivers of the community, so when we would employ flags, we would then have an enforcement component. You teach the drivers that when there's a pedestrian in, entering the crosswalk, that they need to stop, and you start to, it almost became in my former life, where if there was a pedestrian even just standing there on their cellphone, everybody, the whole, it would stop the whole downtown, because everybody was afraid of getting a ticket for not stopping for the pedestrian. So it's a, it's a process that you, you start to learn. I'm not, not wanting to create work for the police department, but that, that is a sort of a thing. As we get more congestion, we're going to maybe need to look at those types of things to help with pedestrian crossings. Just, I was going to add also on the, on the rapid repeating, Jacob and I were talking, it's probably close to $50,000 a leg, if we were to try to add on all four legs. Not that we would, but that's something to consider a cost there.
Speaking of first responders, how do the responders react to having to go through roundabouts when there's an emergency?
Getting people out of the actual loop and not having to block up in the roundabout is a problem, because then you're, you're stuck, and it usually results in additional horns and all kinds of aggression to try and get around.
They are mountable, so...
Get them airborne. And we've coordinated with the fire department as, as we've gone through this project, so we've done, you know, turning templates with both the fire department and the school district, for that matter, showing them, you know, what their vehicles would look like going through this intersection. So there's always some, some hesitation on their end when, when you're proposing a change, but they're aware of it and, and haven't voiced too much concern.
And, and remind us again why this is not a good fit for a traffic light like Maple Street Gun?
So a, a traffic light requires that certain warrants are met, and this, there wasn't enough volume on the side streets of Springwater to warrant a traffic signal at this point in time.
Also, does this minimize the right-of-way take versus a signal in this location, or I guess it depends on the design?
You know, you can, oftentimes, you can get a signal within existing right-of-way. A mini roundabout is, is intended to fit within existing right-of-way. If you were to go to a full size, you'd easily be having right-of-way acquisition at, at all four corners here.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that the council approves the project budget and award the construction contract for the Western and Springwater Intersection Control Project to who's the lowest responsible bidder?
Hurst Construction.
Hurst Construction as the lowest responsible bidder, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulaus, second by Councilmember Poyer, to award the Western and Springwater Intersection Control Project to the lowest responsible bidder, that being Hurst Construction, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents and approve the project budget. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Jacob, thanks. Rob, thanks for being here and going through that discussion with us.
I've got one more.
Appreciate all your efforts today.
McIttrick Street Rebuild, Project 1501, Jacob.
Yeah, this one should be a little bit more straightforward for you. So as you're aware, we're, we're currently in construction on the McIttrick Street Rebuild Project. Construction, just for a quick update, construction began back in April and is scheduled to continue through August. There, as part of that project, we, to facilitate some of our storm water improvements, and where the new sidewalk will be, will be, we've, we have relocated some of the PUD water infrastructure per franchise agreement. The cost for that is on them, but in order to have a smooth construction project, it was determined that our contract, the city's contractor, would perform that work, and the PUD would reimburse us for, for that cost. So I'm here to, to get authorization on the inter-local agreement with the PUD that allows them to pay us back for the work that we've done on their water system.
All right, any questions for Jacob? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion for the City Council to approve the inter-local agreement, PUD SA Number 18-061 with the Shalane County PUD, and authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Asparza, to approve inter-local agreement, PUD SA Number 18-061 with Shalane County PUD, and authorize the mayor's signature. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. Appreciate it. Jessica, Crosscode Connection. Not that we've had any issues with those lately.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Jessica Shaw, Environmental Manager from the Public Works Department. And yes, tonight, we have some revisions, which I'm very excited to bring forward to you regarding our cross-connection code, and yes, as the mayor implied, we have had recently a backflow incident. Fortunately, we were able to find the source of that, get it shut off. It actually was eliminated within 24 hours of identifying the cross-connection between the irrigation system and the city water system, and we were able to get the system flushed very quickly, and even the samples collected that same day were all satisfactory. So we were pretty excited to be able to get the situation under control so quickly, and to have been out monitoring earlier that morning, so we were able to isolate the area where the irrigation water got into the system. So everything went probably as best as it could have gone, given the circumstances, so. So the code that I have tonight, there's, most of the changes are related to changes that have occurred in the Washington Administrative Code. With regards to cross-connection, the state is pretty specific on... With regards to cross-connection, the state is pretty specific on a lot of the activities that we do and how we implement the cross-connection control code. The other big change that we've made to the code is to change the enforcement. Previously, the enforcement was primarily to shut off the water, and as you guys may recall, a couple of years ago, we did find we needed to make some changes to our procedures for shutting people's water off, making sure we were notifying tenants as well as owners of property, so we've added, we'll be doing that now, and, you know, consistent with what we do for our utility billing when we shut water off for non-payment. The other thing is, this particular incident highlighted that we need more options to be able to recover costs from incidents if we so choose, and to take other actions other than just shutting off the water. This particular case, I estimate that the city spent about $20,500 on this one incident in staff time, equipment, and other supplies to resolve that, and that was a pretty short, it really was about four days of work, so, in a pretty isolated area, about 40 properties were affected by it, so.
And that the customer didn't have any kind of backflow preventer at all, is that correct?
The customer actually did, and when we had surveyed him, they did not, and, and actually, the specific customer that was, that was the current property owner did not complete the survey, property manager had completed the survey for them, and they had indicated that there was no connection between the irrigation system and the city water system. When we went out there and investigated, we found that, of course, there was, and that they did have a backflow prevention assembly installed, but it had been installed backwards, so it wasn't one that they'd gotten a permit for, that we'd inspected, or that had been tested, so.
But didn't the code prior say it has to be tested every year?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so there was no monitoring?
We didn't know it was even out there.
Okay, so there wasn't that, that form that was mailed?
There was a survey sent to the property.
Then they checked the wrong box.
Yeah, they said, "We don't have anything," so.
So how, how does the annual inspection program work, since we're on TV and all that?
Yeah, so, so the process is, is that we are, we go out and we survey, and then we resurvey the surveys, a never-ending process, and that's both, you know, because we have about 8,000 connections out there, and only one person who runs this program, that's Julie McWiggins, our quality control technician, and so, in addition to the surveys, we do a lot of written surveys, we mail them out, and we give them the option of completing surveys online, or they could call us, or we'll come out and do the survey in person. We usually reserve the onsite surveys to the commercial and industrial that have more complex plumbing than, say, just a residential property. And then there's also the program for all the valves, the backflow prevention valves that are already installed, that we require they be tested every year. So Julie sends reminders to customers and follows up with them and makes sure that they get those things tested every year, because they do fail, they're a mechanical valve, and, you know, water hammer, changes in water pressure, just time use in the system, they wear out and they stop working. So, to make sure that they continue to work, they do have to be tested annually, and the other part of her job is making sure that when we review plans for remodel or new construction that we're looking at backflow protection, and then she also does the inspections of all the new installations.
So regarding the $20,000 cost this one was, that we handled?
Yeah.
As quick as it could ever possibly be?
Yes.
Are we recouping any money on that, and if not, are we going to, is this new code going to help us be able to recoup money?
We currently don't have the code to support that, but this new code will support recovery of cost.
Does it say cost or a thou, and a $1,000 fine?
Fines, costs, it gives us a lot of flexibility in taking enforcement action. I do want to mention that in this case, the property owner was very concerned, they were very responsive, they were actually, like I said, a different property, the property ownership had changed, and they were, they were very concerned about the situation, responded very promptly, were very cooperative, so, that was a positive.
And in their defense, they really just literally did not know.
That is very possible, yes. So, that's another element of our cross-connection control program, we have information on the website, and we've started in recent years, just because there was some confusion over the survey that people would receive, you know, why was this important, they fill it out, you know, we all have busy lives, there's lots of things we have to do, and one more piece of paperwork, or one more thing to respond to, so we've added some public education flyers, and Julie has also started working more closely with people who don't respond, of calling them, offering to meet them, you know, really taking every opportunity we can to just educate them on why, why we're out there and what we're doing.
Perfect.
Jessica, on the, the system that we're talking about here, are you talking about just connections to prevent irrigation crossover, or is that also on, on the domestic side as well? Because I, like, my sprinkler system, for example, is on the domestic system, because I don't have access to irrigation, but I also have the backflow unit in there.
Yeah.
So are those to be, I've never gotten a form or anything that, at least I remember.
We'll get you signed up. So, very good question, Councilmember Bailey, there are, there's different levels of hazards, and there's also different types of hazards, not just irrigation systems or irrigation, the reclamation district water, and that's where some of our education confusion is challenging, because people talk about their lawn sprinkler systems, or they talk about their irrigation system, and they may or may not be using reclamation district water, they may just be using domestic water. So, we say, if you're drinking, if you're using water from the canal, that, of course, is untreated surface water, lots of pathogens, not a good thing to have, so that's a high hazard. If you're talking about our domestic water that's just gone into your sprinkler system, it still has the potential to pick up contaminants from your sprinkler system, because it's buried in your lawn, but it's a lot lower hazard, because that's our chlorinated drinking water that you're using. So it still requires a backflow prevention valve, but it's a lower priority than something that's a high hazard.
Those don't like to have to be inspected every year?
They still need to be inspected every year.
They should send Julie out to Jim's house.
I realize, I, do I write a check right now?
We'll, we'll get you set up, don't worry. We'll get you on track. But there's, there's a variety of other hazards people don't even think about, post-mix pot machines are another one that are really common with backflow incidents, and it actually creates an acidic compound that's really dangerous, it'll burn, actually get burns, severe burns from drinking the water when you have a backflow event involving a post-mix pot machine. And then, of course, there's other places like fortuaries and waste water treatment plants, where we really don't want any backflow events to occur, so, those are our high hazards.
Thank you.
I'm learning a ton.
Probably more information than you wanted.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Number 2018-15 adopting revisions to the Wenatchee City Code 9.13 Cross Connection Control.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markart, to approve ordinance 2018-15 adopting revisions to the Wenatchee City Code 9.13 regarding cross-connection control. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Jessica, thank you for getting on this, you know, shortly after we've had the issue, we talked about fines, and you said, "We'll get to the code," and sometimes we get to the code, and three years later, we adopt it, and to get this done in four to six weeks is great, so I appreciate your work on that.
Well, I'd also like to recognize Julie McWiggins' efforts, she did a lot of the legwork to research this and get this code prepped, so she deserves some recognition tonight, too, for her work on this, so.
Great. Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
All right, Item H, Shland Douglas Land Trust Annexation. Brooklyn, you're doing annexations now? Got a girl. I know there's nothing you can't do.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman, Brooklyn Holton, Housing and Community Planner for the City of Wenatchee, and this is Resolution 2008, oh, 2018-26, just a set of public hearing for an annexation application that we received from the Shland Douglas Land Trust for an area that's just right outside of, right outside of Broadview. There's no budget impact anticipated on this, and we did bring this to you guys in February for a 10%, and the Shland Douglas Board signed it, they're the only applicant, the only property owner in that area, so they do account for at least 60%. So, in your packet, you have that resolution and the determination of sufficiency from Shland County, showing that that petition was approved, and so this is just a set of public hearing for June 28th, to go over the actual ordinance.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-26 fixing time for public hearing on petition for annexation of an incorporated area located directly west of Phase 8 and 9 of the Broadview neighborhood at the end of Maiden Lane, also known as the Shland Douglas Land Trust Annexation.
And this would be a really good time to pin down that we have four council members available on June 28th, since we're setting this as a public hearing date.
Only four. Second.
Well, we know three.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt Resolution 2018-26 fixing the time for a public hearing on the petition for the annexation, Shland Douglas Land Trust Annexation near Broadview.
I guess that's, yeah.
Discussion.
Your Honor, just to point, yes, satisfying my curiosity, on page 60 of our, our packet, there's a copy of the petition to commence the annexation, and it has the parcel number, and it's got a bunch of all the scrambled stuff in there, I wonder, I mean, is, is that the official document?
No, so that was actually a pen, so I don't know even how that got in there, to be honest. That was an actual pen signature on our.
So the original actually does have a signature and so forth and so?
Yeah, it's an actual, like, pen. It's definitely not a sad face.
Okay, yeah, I, it looks like when you got a, on a web login or something, you got a.
It's just when it got converted to a PDF.
Well, I don't know, I'll look, because even on my computer, it shows up as a signature. I don't know.
Okay, I'll take your word for it.
Gremlin 243.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. We have two public hearing items, do you guys want to take a quick break, or you want to keep plugging away at it? Okay, three minutes. At some point, I'm turning this over to Ruth, because I'm giving a graduation speech. Look at it. So we have two public hearing items tonight, the first regarding our CDBG Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is a caper, which I thought was a little onion. So we'll hear from staff first, and then we'll have a discussion from the council, and we'll turn it over to the public for any discussion they may have. So, Brooklyn, it's all yours.
Brooklyn Holton, Housing and Community Planner. And so, each year, we do the, we provide two opportunities for a public hearing to the public related to our community development block grant, and one of them is with the Annual Action Plan, which you'll see next month, and then another one is with the End of Year Report, which is the caper. So I'm just going to provide a quick PowerPoint to kind of summarize what the 2017 program year was like. We became entitlement community from 2004, and funding has varied quite a bit, from when we first started to 2014, we got a decrease in almost $200,000 from what the federal allocation was, and since 2014, it's continuously increased. In 2017, it was almost $14,500, and this year, you'll see at our annual, during the Annual Action Plan presentation, we've had quite a large increase from last year, so. Our program aligns with the 2013-2017 Consolidated Plan, which guides our goals and policies around that, and then, I already talked about the public hearing. So our goals and strategies, which are identified and established in the Consolidated Plan, is to improve, preserve and improve our neighborhoods, support public services, and reduce homelessness. And the first two are done through CDBG, and the third one is done through our coordination with our homeless programs and the Ten Year Plan to End Homelessness. So the majority of our work has been in investing in capital improvements, for example, the Shland Avenue Sidewalk Project, which should be wrapping up here soon. Our code enforcement efforts with our officers, we support part of their salary, and then we have had a neighborhood improvement grant, both from CDBG and a small portion from the General Fund, to support community-based projects that neighborhoods and neighbors come up with. And the public services support Literacy Council for providing ESL training to our community, and then, in conjunction with what Aaron talked about, with the free dump vouchers for individuals who might have gone above and beyond that, or have a project that that just won't make a dent, and we have funding to help support the cleanup of their property, to get them in compliance with code. So in 2017, our award from HUD was $211,185, and from 2016, we had some rollover funding from a couple of the different projects. We had program, so program admin was decreased quite a bit, just because of construction taking place, and that doesn't take as much grant program administration as it does from our engineers at the city. And then sidewalks, that, that $30,000 is just from the sidewalk project not being bailed out. With the neighborhood grant, we had more grant, or we had applications come in that we used from the General Fund, but grants that came in for the neighborhood grant were either not eligible for CDBG funding, or they were larger than what we had allocated funding for in terms of individuals asking for sidewalk, such as the Shland Project. We had, from a rehab loan, we had program income from just over, over $10,000, so that increased our available funding for the 2017 program year to almost $300,000. And then, how we allocated funding, out of all of what was available, we focused our funding, again, on the infrastructure with the Shland Avenue Project, our code enforcement officers and literacy program, those are our largest ones. During 2017, we had almost a $100,000 of program income come in from our rehab loan program. That was from about 2000, around 2012. So that was unexpected, and so that was not allocated. You'll see in the next slide that we do, the requirement from HUD is that we have to spend our program income prior to spending our federal allocation funds. And so the amount that we budget, for example, program admin, if we have about $42,000, we have to spend program income on that. And so essentially, the amount you'll see, it'll look like there wasn't any funding spent, because that much amount has to essentially rollover. And then, and we do have that 20% cap, which is what determines the program admin, and then 15% cap, which determines the combination between the literacy program and the code enforcement referral and debris removal program. So those two things add up to respectively 20 and 15%. And then, so this is how much we actually ended up spending. We fully spent down the Schland Avenue project. Other than about $130, we have that project just open until it's fully completed. Again, admin wasn't as much because of the construction. And then the code enforcement, we actually had some partnerships come in that covered some of the costs, that we were actually going to be helping some of the homes. And then we also had one home that would have been probably close to $10,000 in expenses, and so we weren't able to support that. So we did have some applications that were covered by other programs, or we weren't able to assist the size. So this is, this might be confusing. So the numbers in the rollover reallocation with the asterisks are the ones that that program income had to support. And so it looks like there wasn't much spent. All of those amounts, when you look at the total, are rolled up into the Schland Avenue reimbursement number. So the 2018 award and the total is really what's going to be matching, because all of those extra fundings, funding we're going to put into that Schland project. Possibly, you'll see me on the 28th again. But, so these amounts, so in 2018, we got $242,460 allocated to us in our federal award. So that's almost $50,000 over what we started receiving from about four years ago, compared to that $14,000 increase we saw in the second slide. So total in 2018, we will have almost $360,000 to allocate towards our projects. And the majority of that would be able to cover the Schland Avenue reimbursement. But we'll be working with finance in a coming-up meeting to kind of look over, how do we spend that allocation, considering it's so much higher? Because we got about $50,000 more in our allocation, and then we also got that $100,000 in program income. So both of those were unplanned for. And that's all.
So tonight, you don't have any action required, it's just information?
Yeah, yeah, allowing the public to comment, look at how we spent the funding, and give any comments they want to.
Any questions for Brooklyn before I turn it over to the audience? Any members of the audience wish to address the council on the CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Report? Seeing no takers, we will then close this public hearing. Thank you, Brooklyn.
Thank you.
And we will open up a public hearing regarding our critical areas. Code 12.08, this does not look like Stephen Nuschwander. I know Stephen, and that looks more like Glenn and Matt. And this is going to look more like Ruth. That's for you. Just be lucky. My first graduation speech.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening. Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director, and Matt Parsons, Associate Planner. And we have before you a draft critical area ordinance, a recommendation from the Planning Commission and the ordinance. This would, this action tonight that is before you would conclude our Growth Management Act update cycle, our eight-year cycle. We did receive a one-year extension for this critical areas update. And we had a choice as a jurisdiction to either take sort of safe harbor state requirements and adopt those, or tailor our regulations to fit our community. And we appreciated the city's council willingness to have us hire some consultants to help us in this process, for a biologist and geotechnical engineer. And they provided recommendations that were of great assistance in this process. The Planning Commission held four workshops and one public hearing, and provided a unanimous recommendation before you, after a lot of hours of work and review and discussion. The code updates address definitions, administrative provisions, mapping, brand-new fish and wildlife section, geologically hazardous section, and then some updates to our wetlands section of code. Last month, we held a workshop with city council, looking at the draft and looking at public comments. Since that time, we have received two new public comments from the PUD, and we've included that in the comment matrix in the packet before you. Just, and representatives from the PUD are here this evening. And some of the, just in general, in some of the comments in the PUD, there's some concerns on maintenance provisions and the recommendation that we adopt the same exemption standard for maintenance that we have in our shoreline master program. The challenge with that, though, is the Shoreline Management Act is a different body of law, different administrative codes. And we have a shoreline master program where if we have environmental issues or potential substantive impacts on a project, we can require a written exemption. We don't have that option under our critical areas code, under our zoning code. So the, yes, the exemption is, does look different than our shoreline master program. Under Growth Management Act, we have coordinated very, on a high level, to try to look at critical air protection equally. But there are some differences, because they're different statutes. And the, for example, if there were a replacement of more than 50% of the power lines in the area, then there would be a review for critical areas in the mule deer habitat. But it'd be a pretty simple review. They have a biologist on staff, they have a management plan for the area. The write-up would be a fairly simple approach to do a mitigation plan and evaluate that, given all the provisions they have in place. There were some comments on geologically hazardous areas and maintenance and permitting. But unless they actually have a development permit in with us, geologically hazardous area requirements don't apply, although it's a good resource for them to consider, depending on what type of work they're doing. So based on the review of all the comments received since the Planning Commission have, has provided a, you know, recommendation, staff did not have any, any additional recommended changes, and would recommend that you consider adoption of the ordinance before you. And would stand for, any questions that now or later that you may have at this time?
I have a question. How will this affect, you know, development permits? Will it increase the cost? Will it make it more difficult?
The, well, let me see. Right now, we review a development for, let's split it into the types of critical area. So for geologically hazardous areas, right now, we do review for geologic hazard. The mapping that's provided is more detailed, but the Washington State Growth Management Act did require that we address things that we didn't before. There are new standards, and when those new standards apply, we're required to incorporate them. For example, a modified ground. So in that respect, the result of the adoption would require some new reviews. But if there's modified ground, meaning we don't know about compaction in that area, it's in the public's interest for a homeowner or a development to know that and be able to build appropriately. Long-term, it's very beneficial. And the way the process is set up is that if, first, there's an initial review to verify if there is or is not an issue, and you don't have to do a full-blown geotechnical report to do that. But if the consultant identifies there is an issue, then they need to do the full report and the mitigation and avoidance measures to verify that it's safe and can be done appropriately. So it's a little bit different, but I think the process is much better than what we had before, because it's, it's set up to, you know, verify if there's an issue. And if there is, then you're addressing that issue for the safety of the development. Under wetlands, really, there wasn't a lot of significant changes from what we had before. It just changed some approaches and formalized what our mitigation plan requirements were. For fish and wildlife, that is a brand-new section than we had before. And we had to meet our requirements under the law for that. But again, having the biologists go out and verify, we started very broad as far as the potential impact, potential designations and species. And they really narrowed it down to what we need to regulate. So we tried to limit that as much as possible. And then we set up regulations, the Planning Commission has regulations suggested before you that are, I think, are fair. Yes, if you were in an area that had a habitat, you would need to hire a biologist to do that, and there is a cost for that. But it's set up to be as predictable as possible. And, you know, for example, in mule deer habitat, there are a whole series of variety of ways to address those issues in a mule deer habitat area that aren't extremely costly and still allow the development to occur. And again, the areas that we're talking about are very, they're very limited in number, because we hired the biologist to narrow it down. Does that help at all?
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for?
Not at this point. For me.
Okay, then if no questions, then at this point, I will turn it over to the public for comment.
Good evening, members of the council. Appreciate the time to talk to you, testify this evening. I'm James Tupper, attorney for the PUD. And with me tonight is Chad Rissman and Vicky Griffith. And Chad works with electrical distribution. He's an engineer in that system, and does a lot of rebuild and replacement projects. And Vicky works a lot with the parks that the district maintains. I appreciate Mr. DeVries' summary of our concerns and the comment letters you received. And we have two requests. And one is that the language in 12.080801, which is the exemption for routine repair and maintenance, and include the provision from the SM, the Schland Master Program, that routine repair and maintenance can include complete replacement of a structure, if that's the typical form of maintenance for that structure. Where this comes into play for the district is they have distribution and transmission lines for electricity, they have wastewater lines, and water supply lines. And they will, as part of their routine maintenance program, in any given year, they'll take a section of that, say a mile of electrical distribution line, and they'll put in new poles and new lines for that section. Now, the way, the language that's in the critical areas regulation right now, that first language in 0801, is fairly typical. That's language that's been used across the state, and previously in the City of Wenatchee's master program, for example. For a number of years now, ecology is recommended in the area of shorelines. And I think people recognize that you run into problems with routine repair and maintenance that is defined by 50% of the value of a structure. If, the typical way you maintain a structure, utility pole, is you leave that utility pole in place. And when it has ended, when it's at the end of its useful life, you replace it. That's how you maintain it. That's continued, considered routine repair and maintenance. So it's a small request. We do ask that. You know, I will say, in all honesty, though, that without that language, we do think the current language allows for the type of maintenance that I've described to you. That, you know, the district, for example, when they're doing a replacement of a one-mile of a distribution line, they're looking at that as maintenance on a circuit. So you go from the substation around, that's, that's the system or the structure that we would be valuing for that. So we wouldn't see that one-mile rebuild project as a, as a, as a 100% replacement under the terms of the exemption, even as it's drafted right now. But it does clarify and makes it clear to everybody that this type of activity is permitted. So that, that's the one request. We also made a comment about mitigation requirements, and really, either how you interpret the existing language, or if we can get the additional language in this section, mitigation wouldn't be an issue for these rebuilt projects. But it illustrates the concern the district has, is that if they have to start developing mitigation plans for each routine repair and maintenance that they schedule in any given year. And then finally, there's a request that, that in terms of mitigation, that when the district's engaged in maintenance of existing park improvements, trails, restrooms, picnic shelters, playground equipment, and utilities are serving them, those should be exempt from critical areas review and mitigation. Those, those structures are part of the hydraulic project approval through FERC, and they are mitigation in and of themselves for impacts. But that's, so those are the requests the district has. I'm happy to answer questions, and Chad and Vicky are here, if they can answer questions as well.
Any questions for Mr. Tupper?
Well, I have a couple of questions, perhaps for Mr. Tupper, then actually for Mr. DeVries. Did the district participate in the development process of these changes, and at our Planning Commission level?
Councilmember, no, we did not. We saw the notice for this hearing in the comment period on the 12th, and so we submitted comments at that. So we did not.
So I assume Schland PUD is on our, like, our interested parties list of meetings and Planning Commission stuff? I don't know. I think you may have answered your own question, though, your own issue, when you said that, in the district's view, normal maintenance includes that replacement. I guess that, that question I'd ask the community development staff. Set aside that it's Schland PUD, set aside it's another entity or a property owner, if someone documents to the city that this is standard practice for normal maintenance and repair, could it be determined that with this existing language?
I think we would, again, Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director, we would lean that way, I suppose, if you had a whole circuit that was replaced. It would be maybe more difficult to meet that standard under this exemption. But, you know, doing a mile at a time, I've used this standard elsewhere, and we never triggered it for utility provisions other than the construction of new lines.
Yeah, I'm thinking of other infrastructure, things like roads in particular, that are, whatever, what's going to happen down here. Ground up, it's still within that corridor that was established?
And.
And that's different than just doing an overlay?
Yeah, most of everything is typical maintenance and operations would ever be triggered. And it, you know, I think a lot of the comments and the letters were speaking to the list of geologically hazardous areas. Those are never triggered unless there's a development permit application.
Okay. Is this all my questions?
So a simple repair, like he's referring to, could be done without any problem at all?
Correct.
Have you ever had to, and I don't know, I'm just asking the stupid question, have you ever had to apply for a development permit for any of the repairs that you're talking about?
Not that I know of, no. We have in other jurisdictions, it's litigated over the language as currently presented, over whether one-mile rebuild project constitutes, constitutes normal repair and maintenance under a very similar language that's here. under a very similar language that's here. And, you know, we prevailed on that as, in that, in that litigation, but we're hoping to avoid that by having clarification.
So my questions.
Anyone else have any other questions?
So did, just for, for my own clarification here, other than, you know, what, what it says here in twelve-oh-eight-oh-eighty, you would, what, what language would you add that would change what's here?
Yeah, so it's on the first page of the letter, and it's language from the section seven-point-five-point-three, subpart B in the Schlandt Master Program. It's, it's in, I don't know if you have that comment letter in front of you, but it starts replacement of a structure development may be authorized as repair, where such replacement is the common method of repair for that type of structure development. And there's additional conditions in it. I think that language would have to be modified somewhat for the critical areas ordinance, but...
I have a possible suggestion, but I think we should take testimony, then close that part, and then...
Okay, well, there are no other questions for Mr. Tupper. We will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any other public?
Oh, is there anyone else who'd wish to speak on this issue? All right, moving on, do, I have a motion?
Your Honor, I, I'll go ahead and make a motion for discussion, and that would be that we adopt ordinance number two-thousand-eight-dash-sixteen, adopting amendments to chapter twelve-point-zero-eight resource lands and critical areas development, and declaring final compliance with the Washington State Growth Management Act, RCW thirty-six-seventy-A periodic review update that's required by RCW thirty-six-seventy-A one-thirty, section five, subsection five, and including in this motion noting that this is accepting the recommendation of the City of Wenatchee's Planning Commission, and also extend the motion to, it's adopting as, as presented by our planning commission, including this, this maintenance provision. And yet, in the motion, remand an issue back to the planning commission on this specific issue to have it further analyzed and a report back to us. I want to make sure I get this worded correctly.
Exemption, repair, and maintenance.
Regarding clarification of this exemption and how it extends to infrastructure facilities, not just owned by Schlandt PUD, but to other agencies that, including ourselves, in the area, and that we'd like a report back in, then would six months be too long? Okay, four months?
Four.
So whatever that date might, might be.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The, the reason I, I'm pushing this forward, because as I read the Growth Management Act, we're at the tail end of the compliance period.
Correct.
And, and we want to make sure that we stay in compliance with the Growth Management Act and, and not suffer any of the potential consequences that result from not being in compliance.
Well, hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Did we hear from Linda? Did she go away?
Haven't heard her.
We heard it.
Okay. Okay, motion carries. And that concludes our action items. Moving on to reports, any new business from the council, any?
The mayor had a couple of things that he asked that we report on. Brad, I don't know if you want to say a few words about the bond sale, the all-in interest cost, and, yep.
Brad Posenjack, Finance Director. So on Tuesday morning, the city, or the city's underwriter, DA Davidson, sold, sold the city's fourteen million of sewer bonds, and they had buyers for him, and when it all comes down to the total all-in interest cost, the city will be paying about three-point-four-two percent on the fourteen million twenty-year debt. And so it all, they sold all the bonds, DA Davidson bought fifteen percent of the bonds that were sold, and we even had a few local buyers that were interested, and so that was good to see, local interest in the sale of the city's debt. I don't know if there's any questions, every, I guess closing is, the final closing is on the twenty-eighth. So on the twenty-eighth of June, we should be getting the fourteen million dollars to be used for the sewer projects.
You did mention it wasn't like a quick off-the-shelf, you said, so that...
No.
That's a good sign.
Yes, so...
You can talk about that.
Yeah, we did hire, so as part of the bond issuance process, we hired a pricing advisor, and that pricing advisor is there with our underwriter while they're selling our bonds, because the underwriter sets all the different rates, and the interest rates and the maturities on these, and the underwriter's working with buyers of the bonds. So we had a pricing advisor who was there on site, kind of looking over their shoulder to make sure that the pricing that they set was reasonable. And so one of the factors that the pricing advisor mentioned was, if all your bonds just sell, like they're flying off the shelf, then you know that you're paying too high of an interest rate. And so it seems like there was a lot of, there was a lot of push and pull, a lot of negotiation with some buyers, and so the, our pricing advisor said he was, he was very pleased with the way everything went, and the fact that, that it took a little while to sell them all gave us confidence that we had good rates going into it, so. Yeah.
Good news.
Thank you.
Good.
Yep.
And the other thing?
The other thing he wanted to report on is, we closed on the federal building. Steve has the keys. So if any of you want to have a tour at any time, and now we're heading in, we've taken our tours, we're going to be heading into the more intensive design process, so it's exciting for the city.
Nice.
I think that was it.
Great. So I would just like to remind folks that this Saturday is the Wenatchee Downtown Association Ale Walk for fathers and family members who'd like to take their dads out to have a beer. It's from one to six, was it?
Yeah, yeah, twenty, twenty-some stops, potentially. You don't have to make them all.
It's, it's tasting.
It's tasting beer, so it's, it's good.
Who's the designated walker?
Anything else to report from council? Okay.
Steve had...
Oh.
Chief Crowe? We've got the Run With Cops event that starts over on Saturday in East Wenatchee at the Fred Meyer fundraiser event for the special Olympics. It starts at seven o'clock, you can go on our website page and get information. So run!
Great, thank you. All right, well, if there's no more announcements and no other business to conduct, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.